Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can I welcome members to this remote meeting of full council? And can I also welcome members of the public who are joining us tonight? Thank you for joining us and you are more than welcome. Can I please ask members to put your microphone on mute and only turn it on when you're asked to speak? Also, can I ask member, can you please put your microphone on your phone and silence? And also, if you could have minimum sound in your background for me, that would be great. Thank you. We have got one agenda on the item tonight, one item on the agenda, and it's to give an award to absolutely amazing people that have done so much for our city over the years. So before I go further, could I call on the Chief Exec Tom Raiden to introduce the dignitary and under guests of tonight's parachute regiment, present here tonight, Chief Exec?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and welcome to all our guests. I'd just like to run through run through the list for everybody. First of all, we'd like to welcome HM, the Lord Lieutenant of West Yorkshire, Mr Ed Anderson, who may be familiar with full council in the past, I'm not sure. Also, the High Sheriff of West Yorkshire, Mr Jonathan Thornton, the Honorary Recorder of Leeds, His Honour Judge Guy Curl QC, Leeds Children's Mayor Samuel Hill, Honorary Colonel, Colonel John Hanford OBE, Commanding Officer Lieutenant Colonel Rick Lewin, Regimental Colonel Lieutenant Colonel Liam Cradden MBE, and Executive Officer Major Alan Armstrong. You are very welcome on behalf of the council.
Thank you. Could I now ask the Leader of the Council, councillor Judith Blake, to address the meeting? Councillor Blake?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and welcome to everyone on the call tonight. It's a great pleasure to be here at this special event. I would also like to welcome our distinguished guests who are here with us today for this most prestigious and historic occasion. And as the Chief Executive has said, we extend our welcome to Lord Lieutenant Ed Anderson, High Sheriff Jonathan Thornton, Honorary Recorder, His Honour Judge Curl QC, and Leeds Children's Mayor Samuel Hill. And of course, a very special welcome to the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment, known as Four Para, who are here to receive the Freedom of the City Award. Honorary Colonel John Hanforth OBE is on the call to receive the award on behalf of the battalion. He is accompanied by Commanding Officer Lieutenant Colonel Rick Lewin, as well as Regimental Colonel Lieutenant Colonel Liam Cadden MBE, and Executive Officer Major Alan Armstrong. It is with enormous pride that we bestow the honorary freedom of Leeds to Four Para. This is the highest civic honour, and it is bestowed in recognition of their many years of devoted service, sacrifices, and the historic association of the battalion with the city of Leeds. The magnitude of this honour is underlined by the fact that Four Para are the first military unit to receive it in over forty years, with it last being bestowed in 1973. This honour grants the battalion the freedom to parade through our streets with bayonets fixed, drums beating, and colours flying. It is our sincere hope that we will see the battalion parade in this way through Leeds when it is safe to do so next year. This, of course, is the first time the award has been bestowed virtually, which gives it even more historical significance. The award represents the respect and esteem the city holds for Four Para. This appreciation that has been earned in many ways, not least through the role the battalion has played in our communities, including its contribution to the city's Covid-19 response in helping to deliver vital mobile testing sites. The battalion has, of course, regularly led the parades in support of the annual Lord Mayor's civic remembrance commemorations. They play a major role in our annual Armed Forces Day celebrations, including the Veterans Parade. As members will know, Armed Forces Day is a key city event that enables the public to show support to those serving, as well as veterans and cadets. It provides an important morale boost for troops currently serving on operations and their families. The battalion are also a key signatory to our Armed Forces Covenant, which ensures tailored support and assistance for existing and former members of the Armed Forces in Leeds. On top of Four Para's contribution to community and civic life in Leeds, this award also recognises the immense military contributions from past, present, and future members of Four Para. As a city, we have the utmost regard for our armed forces, and we are eternally grateful for all that they do to serve our crown and country and protect the values we hold dear. This award is the city's way of recognising the devoted service given and the huge sacrifices made by every member of Four Para in its work as an army reserve unit. I am delighted that we have come together in this way to honour Four Para. However, as I said before, we look forward to seeing them parade in person as soon as it is safe to do so. Lord Mayor, it gives me great pleasure to move that Four Para be admitted to be an honorary freedom of the city of Leeds in recognition of their long and historic and honourable association with the city and in appreciation of their loyal and devoted service to our sovereign and country. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I now call on councillor Flynn to second?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. As you can see, I take great pleasure, personal pleasure, on behalf of the Conservative Group in seconding this motion to grant freedom of the city to the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment, my own battalion. Particularly welcome to all distinguished guests, and particularly Colonel John Hanford, who I met some twenty years ago. Very briefly, I have to say, another lifetime for both of us, I suspect. I have to say, Colonel Hanford, you're looking in rather better condition than I am. I've attended two previous Freedom of the City ceremonies in Bradford and Liverpool, and I'm delighted now that my adopted city of Leeds has decided to square the circle so far as Four Para is concerned. A little bit of my own sort of career in Four Para now, but just a little bit. I joined Four Para in 1971 and stayed in for twenty-nine years and left rather reluctantly, as we all do. I'd spent almost half my life in the battalion at that stage. It's something that I don't think ever leaves you. As I left in 2000, Colonel Hanford joined as the commanding officer. Although I never had the pleasure of serving under him, I did meet him briefly, and he helped me with a personal matter of which I'm still grateful today. So thank you very much indeed, Colonel. Two mutual acquaintances of ours, Tom Barney and Dave McCauley, who both served me in a company for Para, both sent their best wishes. It's a small world, and Tom Barney is watching this this evening. One of the many highlights of my career in Four Para, in every sense of the word, was in early nineteen eighties, I had a mid-air collision with the then commanding officer, Colonel Hamish McGregor. We met up at the aircraft, and we came down rather more rapidly than is recommended for military parachuting. In true parachute fashion, the commanding officer walked away unharmed. I finished up with two broken feet in a field hospital in Germany. But enough of me anyway. I think the epitome of the parachute regiment, and Four Para in particular, is a man called Alex Sutton, who joined the parachute regiment in 1942 on its formation. He'd previously been in the army from the age of seventeen. In September 1943, Alex left North Africa to take part in the Italian campaign. He arrived at the harbour of Taranto in the southern part of Italy, on the heel of Italy, where his ship hit two mines and sank within a few minutes with the loss of one hundred and fifty men. Alex was in the water for ninety minutes before he was rescued, delivered to dry land, and then proceeded to fight his way up Italy, eventually finishing up in a place called Monte Cassino. For any of those who know about military history, you will know that Monte Cassino was the scene of some of the most brutal fighting of the Second World War. In September 1944, Alex parachuted into south of France as part of Operation Dragoon. This was an operation, two months after the D-Day landings, that was designed to take the pressure somewhat off the northern parts of France, but also to open up some of the major ports in southern France to allow men and materials to get ashore. Alex, two months later, parachuted into Greece, forty miles from Athens. All this before he was twenty-one years of age. He finished his career in Palestine in 1946, another quiet posting, and returned to Liverpool where he took up the rest of his career with Liverpool City Council, another coincidence. Alex, every year, goes back or went back to a little town called Les Arcs in the south of France, where he was the guest of honour of the mayor of the town when they celebrated the liberation of Les Arcs, as every other town does in that area, in August of each year. I know Colonel Hanford has actually been to Les Arcs, and he's actually met Alex Sutton and his son, so it's an even smaller world. Alex was one of the most modest and unassuming men, and I know, when you think what he actually achieved before the age of twenty-one, it really does make you realise how lucky we all are today, even with the rigours of Covid-19 around us. I communicated with his son earlier today, Colonel Hanford, Dave, who we also met, and he said you were a right fellow, which, if you're a Scouse, means it's high praise indeed. He's also watching this evening. In some ways, we're fortunate still to have Four Para following the end of the Cold War. After successive defence reviews, which are always short-sighted in my view, the other two TA parachute battalions, the fifteenth Scottish Battalion, the tenth London Battalion, were expanded in the nineteen nineties and now form part of the four companies of Four Para. And in another sense, it guaranteed the survival of Four Para, basically, which is now an integral part of the Army 2020 Plan in sixteen air assault brigade in reserve capacity. I won't go into too much detail about the military achievements of Four Para. I'm sure Colonel Hanford and his colleagues will be more than keen to mention that. But I would just like to say that a considerable number of men from Four Para served most recently in Iraq and Afghanistan, and continue to serve on a regular basis. So I just echo everything that Judith said about Four Para in Leeds, what it's done for the city, what it means to me, what it means to every airborne soldier. So, Lord Mayor, it is with great pleasure that I second this motion to grant the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment, the freedom of the city of Leeds, and I look forward to the day when the city welcomes the battalion to walk through. My own battalion. Thank you very much indeed, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I now call on councillor Goldson?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, distinguished guests. I'm happy to support giving the freedom of the city to Fourth Para on behalf of the Liberal Democrat Group. As we've heard already, through personal testimony through councillor Flynn, of the value of this particular association with our city, also, of course, from Leader of Council in terms of the institutional value that Fourth Para have for us and what they have given to the Leeds community. Lord Mayor, I'd like to focus on perhaps an element of the contribution of the Armed Forces, which is often overlooked when we look at records. Records tend to point out which campaigns they've been involved in and which battles they were also associated with. Thankfully, Lord Mayor, peacetime is something that we have become far more accustomed to over recent decades, and that is in no short reason, down to our investment in our Armed Forces and their reputation across the world for not being crossed. But more recently, their value as an emergency service is that which we have appreciated most. We've seen how, when the country is in dire straits, even in peacetime, their logistical value is essential for us to respond, whether we have significant floods that need a response in a locality that emergency services normally can't respond to. The Armed Forces are there. And when it came to Covid, they responded in terms of delivering vaccination when it needs to be done en masse. And, Lord Mayor, we also appreciate our armed services, and I know that Fourth Para have done this, when they fly the flag for our nation across the world in terms of their response and their logistical value for delivering humanitarian aid and offering civil response for people who are in distress. So for that service on behalf of this city and the wider country, and of course, because of the local people who are involved in Fourth Para and get personal value from the organisation and the investment that they make in their career and in their personal enrichment. We are very glad to support the Fourth Para in having the freedom of the city and look forward to seeing them parading in public with a good crowd, that doesn't have to be socially distanced sometime soon. Thanks in part to the effort that they have made in the Covid response. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Can I now call on councillor Finnegan to support?
My Lord Mayor, it's myself, councillor Hutcheson, talking on behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, my Lord Mayor. It's my great honour to welcome distinguished guests and to be speaking on behalf of the Morley Borough Independents and the people of Morley and Leeds in the support of the brave men and women that make up the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment, Four Para, and that they be admitted to be an honorary freeman of the city of Leeds. As mentioned, their long, historic, and honourable association with the city is without doubt commendable, to say the least. If nothing more, any man or woman that's willing to jump out of a perfectly good aeroplane, sometimes under enemy fire in faraway hostile countries, protecting the Karen, Crown, and country certainly deserves this accolade. We look forward to seeing in person, and not virtually, Four Para parading through the streets of Leeds very soon. My Lord Mayor, it is with great pleasure we formally support this great honour. Thank you, my Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Mark Dobson to support?
Good evening, Lord Mayor, and good evening extremely honoured and distinguished guests. On behalf of Gartherton Swillington Independents, we too would like to support the business put before council this evening in terms of the honorary freeman of the city of Leeds for Four Para. I think the points have been very well made around a body who supports the entire nation in wartime and, more recently, through Covid-19 in peacetime. The achievements of this body cannot be understated. Last year, we had the pleasure, and it seems like a pleasure now, doesn't it, colleagues, to be able to congregate together to celebrate an organisation close to the hearts of many of us in Leeds. This year, we have the great honour of supporting a motion for Forpara, who, let's be honest, look after every single person in this nation who served the Crown and the country with massive distinction throughout crisis after crisis, the most recent, of course, being Covid this year, and their role has been unwavering and extremely, as one would expect, diligent and professional. The day will come, all too soon, I hope it will be soon now, when we can see that parade that we've all spoke about this evening, and it will be an honour to stand and watch that parade in tribute to this fantastic body of people. So on that note, it's a great honour this evening to be able to support the motion before council. Thank you for your service. It is appreciated by every citizen in this city, and thank you for attending this evening. It's just a shame we cannot see you in person. And one final note, a gentleman I've always held in high regard, councillor Flynn, I did not know, to my shame, his military background with Four Para, and he has gone up even further in my estimation, because a gentleman who can wear that beret with such pride and honour, is a fine gentleman to rub shoulders with. And just to finish on that note, thank you so much, everybody. It's been a pleasure to speak this evening. Keep safe and well, and we are happy to support the motion.
Thank you. I will now go to devote the motion. If anyone does not agree, I wish to abstain. Please say so, else I'll take a silence for agreement. Thank you. That's been carried. Can I now call and Lord Lieutenant and Lieutenant to say a few words? Lord Lieutenant, you're on mute.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Lord Mayor, High Sheriff, Recorder of Leeds, Members of Council, and Representatives of the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment. As the Queen's personal representative here in West Yorkshire, it is a great pleasure to be able to join you today for this important and most prestigious occasion. The origins of the post of Lord Lieutenant can be traced back to the sixteenth century and the reign of Henry VIII. They were essentially military appointments. Our powers to raise a militia have long gone, but all Lord Leftenants still retain very close links with the Armed Forces. And supporting all parts of the Armed Forces, including not just regulars, but also veterans, reservists, and cadets, is a very important and enjoyable part of my role. I am delighted that Leeds City Council has bestowed this prestigious honour today. I thank you, my Lord Mayor, for inviting me to join you. And as the Queen's representative, I offer my heartfelt congratulations to the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I now invite the Chief Exec Tom Raiden to read a tribute from the city of Leeds.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is the tribute from the city of Leeds inscribed on the scroll that will be presented to Four Para. At a meeting of the council of the city of Leeds, held on the ninth day of December 2020, at a special council meeting convened for the said purpose with the Lord Mayor, councillor Eileen Taylor in the chair, it was resolved unanimously that, under an pursuance of a resolution passed under section 249 of the Local Government Act of 1972, we confer upon Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment, the freedom of entry into the city of Leeds on ceremonial occasions with bayonets fixed, drums beating, and colours flying in recognition of their long and historic and honourable association with the city and in appreciation of their loyal and devoted service to our sovereign and country.
Thank you. I am sorry that I cannot present this scroll in person to the battalion in person, but hopefully there will be the opportunity in the not too distant future for us to do so. Can't wait for the day for us to meet all in person and have a big celebration. I would now invite Honorable Coleman, John Anford, OBE, to address this meeting.
Well, Lord Mayor, firstly, thank you all very much indeed for your very kind and humbling words. As we're lucky enough to have the commanding officer present, he's managed to escape from the exercise. He will start to talk about the Fourth Battalion, then I will continue, if that is okay. Rick, are you there?
Yes. Lord Mayor, Lord Lieutenant, High Sheriff, Honorary Recorder, and Leeds Children's Mayor, honoured guests and the entire community of Leeds. It is an incredible honour and privilege to be receiving the freedom of the city of Leeds on behalf of the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment. This great honour and recognition of the strong bond that exists between the Parachute Regiment and the city of Leeds has come about through much hard work between my predecessors and the Lord Mayors over the years. I would like to specifically thank Lieutenant Colonel Andrew Waring, who I assumed command from in August, but who can't be with us today because he's currently deployed on operations. It's a great shame that due to the current situation, we will not be able to parade through the streets of Leeds in the near future. However, I remain ready to do so when appropriate and at a safe time. I'm very much looking forward to enjoying and adding to the strong bond that exists between us over the coming two years. But I know this bond will endure far beyond my tenure as a commanding officer. Thank you very much.
Rick, thank you. And, Lord Mayor, just to repeat my initial statement, thank you all for those wonderfully humbling words. And councillor Billy Flynn, it's great to see you again, and it's great to catch up, and it's wonderful to think that Tom and Dave and Alex Sutton are also watching. It just shows you that the esprit de corps within the regiment will never die, and I really look forward to seeing you all in the summer when we march through Leeds. As the commanding officer twenty years ago, I've been privileged to witness the special relationship between Four Para, the people of Leeds, and the surrounding areas. Of course, paratroopers have lived in and around Leeds since the Second World War. With the current Fourth Battalion being formed in 1967 from the then 12th, 13th Yorkshire and Lancashire and the 17th Durham parachute battalions. We're proud to say that we still have a foothold in all of these areas. Our headquarters is down the road from Leeds in Thornbury Barracks, Putsey, where we've always felt a massive part of and done everything we can to enhance your great community. Not forgetting Remembrance Sunday after Remembrance Sunday, where we stood shoulder to shoulder together, remembering those who have given their lives for our country. And at least two of those have been recent-serving Four Para soldiers. I know that the recent commanding officers and the law I know that the recent commanding officers and the Lord Mayors have been tirelessly working towards formalising our relationship. And it's a great pleasure to be part of the Freedom Ceremony this evening. The magnitude of the honour being bestowed on the battalion is emphasised when we consider that the last freedom of the city for a military unit was granted in nineteen seventy-three. Not only is this quite rightly a very rare honour to bestow upon us by the Lord Mayor, but tonight's occasion, as has already been mentioned, is even more unique as the first ever virtual freedom of the city of Leeds and probably the first ever freedom within the United Kingdom. Like you, we were desperately disappointed when the freedom had to be postponed in the summer. But we're eternally grateful for your vision and fortitude to lay on this incredible evening. It's certainly whetting the appetite for the day we eventually march through your great streets with bayonets fixed, drums beating, and colours flying in recognition of the unbreakable and honourable association between the city of Leeds and the Fourth Battalion, the Parachute Regiment. Importantly, we look forward to making our relationship even stronger and more meaningful as we move forward together into twenty twenty-one and beyond. Twenty twenty has been a challenging year for all and a heartbreaking year for many. On behalf of the battalion, I wish you and the entire Leeds community a peaceful, safer, and more optimistic twenty twenty-one together. Thank you very much indeed.
You're muted, Lord Mayor.
Sorry, I'll start again. This brings us to the end of the meeting. Can I take this opportunity to thank you all for attending tonight meetings? And I'd also take this opportunity to wish you all a Merry Christmas when it do come. Most of all, I am praying and I'm hoping that we will have a bright future, happy twenty twenty-one. And I'm looking forward for that to come forward, that we don't repeat this year. But most of all, do take care of yourself and your loved one. And please do stay safe in the meantime. Thank you all for joining me tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor.
I salute you all, everybody.
Thank you.